Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. It is 6:00 PM. We have a quorum of commissioners present. So I'd like to call the word to the regular session of the Leavenworth Planning Commission for Monday, December the 7th. For those folks who haven't attended one of these meetings before, we have some housekeeping chores that we want to take care of first. And then we've got two actions we're going to talk about, and I've got specific instructions for everybody when we get to that part. So, first thing up is we need to approve the minutes from the July 13th, 2020 meeting. Commissioners, or staff, is there anything to add to the July minutes?
No, I would just note that we had tabled these previously since we didn't have a majority of members who were at that meeting. We did check with our city clerk on the legalities of who can vote for those. All Planning Commission members can vote for those minutes even if they were not at that meeting, based on Kansas statute. So that's why we went ahead and brought it back to you tonight, just to go and get those voted on.
I apologize, but we can't hear anything out here.
Okay, well, we'll make sure you're aware when it's time for the public hearing.
Okay.
So no other information before that?
Yes.
All right, so, anything that we, comments from the commissioners for the, regarding the July minutes?
While not here, I did review them all.
Okay. All right. So if there are no questions or concerns, I'll accept the nomination to accept the approval, to approve the minutes?
So move, that should be approved for July 13?
Thank you. Can I have a second?
My second.
All approved, say yea, or raise your right hand, Commissioner, so I can see you.
Have they seen us?
Linda, Chris, approve the minutes?
We've got Linda, Chris, James, and Cat, and Sherri on.
And Sherri. Can I either give a yes or a, raise your right hand, so I can see it, please?
I'm not sure. Are the people online able to hear us?
Commissioners, can you hear us?
Yeah, let's see.
Well, in that case...
Oh, hey Greg, out in the hall.
You want up there?
Yeah.
Oh.
It was working before when we were down here, so, let's see. Can everybody online hear us now?
Yeah.
Linda, Chris, James, oh, Linda, Chris, James, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, can you still hear us? No, that's not gonna... Thinking of that. Okay, can you guys hear us?
Okay. Okay, so now that you can hear me, let me go and say welcome, and let's go in, our first item was the approval of the July 2020 minutes from our meeting. I had asked if there was any questions or concerns, nothing from staff, nothing from the commissioners here. Commissioners at home, do you have any questions or concerns about the July 20th minutes? Nope, no. Right. And so then I asked for it to be approved, for us, you know, the nomination to approve it, we had that. I also asked for a second, we had that. And so now commissioners, we're about to approve the July 20th minutes. So, if you concur, either say yes and/or raise your right hand, so I can see that. There's one.
There's one.
James? Linda? If you concur, raise your right hand.
James and Linda, are you able to hear us?
Well, we got three, we got seven commissioners.
Well, we have four.
We have four.
So, well...
Okay.
All right, well...
Yeah.
All right, so let's say for the sake of argument that the other three agree, and we're going to move on, and we'll say the, to our second item. So the second item is approval of the minutes from the October 5th, 2020 meeting. So, staff, anything to add to the minutes from the...
Nope, nothing to add on that.
Thank you. Commissioners, with regards to the October minutes, any questions or concerns for staff? Commissioners? You have one, no?
Two. I move that it be approved as read.
All right, so we have a, we have a request, approve the minutes as read, we have a second? James seconds it, all right. All in favor, say yes and/or raise your right hand?
Okay.
All right. Opposed, say nay, or raise your left hand? Nope. So the motion carries. We've approved the October 5th minutes. All right, so let's go ahead and move on to new business. So we have two items for new business. I propose that we start with item number two first, which is the 2020 Tac 40 special use permit for the front gate marketplace, final plat, second plat. Staff report, please.
Yep, this is actually an approval for a final plat of the Fort Gate Marketplace. Let me get this shared up here for you. And let me find it. Okay, this is a two lot plat for the Fort Gate Marketplace, second final plat. The first final plat was previously approved by the Planning Commission, previously this fall. The site of this development is where the former commander in, former commander's in was, that's been demolished, and a fast food restaurant and a daycare center will be built here in the future, so this plat is just making way for that. So if you have any questions, I can answer those for you now.
Thank you. Questions from commissioners for staff? Maybe he just has his microphone on, I don't know.
I'm not sure.
It's on their website page, on their Facebook page, I've got the phone...
Is it a number?
Yeah. Sorry, you started.
Here's how playing, dial, um, pay for crack.
I'm not sure.
Thank you. The crack is south, on Facebook.
Okay, I think we've got folks on here who are not muted. If you're here watching this meeting online, I'm going to have to ask that you mute your microphones.
Thank you. All right, so commissioners, again, any questions from commissioners with regards to the second plat, final and second plat for the front gate marketplace? Okay, seeing no indication, I'll ask for someone to propose to accept the motion, and then second the motion, please.
None of this is new to us, so this is just recommendations for this final plat. So I recommend that we approve the final plat for the second plat for the Fort Gate Marketplace subdivision.
Thank you. Second?
Chairman, I second the motion.
Thank you, sir. We have a, it's been nominated second. All in favor, say yes and/or raise your right hand? Yes?
Yeah.
Commissioners?
Okay.
That's three. Linda?
Yes.
Linda?
Was that Sherri that said yes?
Yeah.
Yes, so I think it was Sherri and Chris.
Yeah, it was Sherri Woodson that said yes.
All right.
Yeah, this is, I say no.
All right, we have a no. Okay, comments or concerns?
Well, my, my, my one concern is, Chris, again, this is, my one concern is, is a few months back, we approved a plat to do a convenience store and a fast food restaurant. The convenience store is going to be right next to a convenience store. Now we're asked to approve the other plat where you're going to have a fast food restaurant next to a fast food restaurant and a daycare center. I, I, I don't know, I think I just have a little bit of a problem with that, but, um, for now, I'm going to have to vote no, so, that's just my thoughts.
All right, thank you.
Okay, you can continue, yeah, with your vote.
Thank you, Chris. All right, so we have one, no, and we have four, five, five approving. Linda, Linda, have you voted?
I think Linda got logged off.
Okay, so that's...
May I chime in on this?
Who are you?
Uh, this is...
Virginia Beaman.
This is not a public hearing item, ma'am.
Yeah, are you a commissioner, ma'am?
Okay, all right. I just wanted to clarify something for Chris regarding the convenience stores.
Yeah, I'm going to have to, we can't take public comment on a non-public hearing item.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so the motion carries, we go ahead and we'll approve the recommended approval of the final plat for the front gate.
I'm going to ask for just a second, I think I figured out a problem. We had the phone dialed in and somehow got hung up after we tested it earlier, so, give me just a second.
Yes, ma'am.
Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. To enable audio control, please enter your audio pin followed by the pound or hash sign.
Let's see. Well, that's good.
Hey, Chris and James, can you guys hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, that's much better, okay. Sorry about that, we had it set up, and then somehow that phone line got disconnected, so.
Right, okay, so let's kind of go, we're trying to move on to the first item for new business. So, for folks who have not been here before, let me go ahead and explain how this is going to happen. So, first off, I'm going to ask for the staff to tell us their report. So they're going to talk to us about, and provide us information, in addition to what we have for our, with our packages. At which point then, commissioners will be able to ask questions of the staff, and that'll be interchange back and forth. After that, since the applicant is here, if the commissioners have questions for the applicant, sorry, we will go ahead and ask, that conversation will go on between commissioners and the applicant. Once that portion is done, I will open it for the public meeting, at which point anybody who wants to speak for or against this particular request has the opportunity to do that. For those of you at home, I'm going to try to catch you, raise your hand, and I'll see if I can catch you, and I will try to identify who you are, and I'll call you out when it's your turn to, when I can get you into it.
Chairman, if I could make a suggestion, I think everybody on, who's online has access to the chat feature. If you would like to speak, send a chat and just say that you would like to speak, and I will, in order that those come in, I'll keep an eye on those, and we can, we can call on those folks that way.
Yeah, thank you. All right. For those of you who are present, if you want to speak out and make, have a question, you need to come to the podium, you need to identify who you are, and what your address is, and then I ask that you kind of keep your comments to three to five minutes. And essentially what you're doing, you're asking questions...
This conference will now be recorded.
...of the commission, or you're asking questions of the staff, all right? If you have questions for the applicant, that's, the conversation is between you and us, and then we'll ask the applicant for his feedback, all right? So the dialogue is between you and us, and then we try to bring the applicant or the city planners in. And that's kind of how we're going to do that. So, with no further ado, let's go ahead and address 2020 Tac 37 rezoning 00000 Limit Street and 00000 Villas Street. May I have the staff report, please?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you said, this is a rezoning request for the property located at approximately 2100 Limit. This is the property between Villas and Limit Street, just to the west of the Henry Leavenworth Elementary School. The property is currently zoned R125, which is a low-density, single-family residential, and the request is to rezone it to a multifamily residential district to allow a townhome development. The applicant is proposing a total of 28 townhome units with a through street from Villas to Limit as part of this and his conceptual site plan. The Development Review Committee did review this project on October 15th and discussed items related to traffic congestion that's normally associated with the nearby school, street configuration, utility issues, stormwater and water quality issues, and some other minor items related to the potential development of townhome units at this location. So the applicant is aware of those and has been working on some alternative ideas for this site. So whenever the Planning Commission or City Commission takes action on an application for a rezoning, we have a list of items to go through, so I'll just go through those one by one for you now. So the first is the character of the neighborhood. The subject property is vacant, and it's surrounded by other large lot, single-family residential development and a few vacant lots. To the east, as I said, is the Henry Leavenworth Elementary School. To the west is a traditional, single-family residential neighborhood. Second, the zoning and the use of nearby properties. So the surrounding properties are also zoned R125, low-density, single-family residential. Henry Leavenworth Elementary to the east is zoned R19, medium-density, single-family, and there is a single-family residential neighborhood to the west that is zoned planned unit development. The third is the suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted. The subject property is currently zoned, as I said, R125, which is typical of agricultural and large lot uses within the city. Property is vacant and is surrounded by other large lot, single-family uses, but it may be suitable for a variety of residential uses depending on that particular proposal. The next is the extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. The proposed rezoning could have a potential detrimental effect on nearby property due to an increase in traffic along the narrow and unimproved sections of Villas and Limit Streets in this area. The streets in this general vicinity are ditch section streets, and they're already experienced brief periods of high-volume traffic associated with drop-off and dismissal at that nearby elementary school. The next is the length of time the subject property has remained vacant as zoned. The property has always been single-family or agricultural in nature. The next is the relative gain to economic development, public health, safety and welfare by the reduction of the value of the landowner's property as compared to the hardship imposed by such reduction upon the individual landowner. The proposed rezoning would have a positive effect on the economic vitality of Leavenworth by allowing for a variety of housing types and price points to serve residents within the city. The next is the recommendation of staff. Staff would recommend approval of the item. The next is the conformance of the requested change to the adopted or recognized comprehensive land use plan. The subject area is identified as appropriate for low-density residential uses, which is defined as 7,500 to 14,000 square foot of lot area per development. The proposed development provides approximately 4,700 square foot of lot area per dwelling unit, as shown on the conceptual submitted plan. And then any other factors that may be relevant, and there are no other factors that we, that staff would note. So with that, I can answer any questions for you, and Jeremy Greenemeyer, who is the applicant, is here as well to answer questions that you might have.
All right, thank you. So, from commissioners first, commissioners, are there any questions of the staff report?
Julie, you mentioned economic impact, and you kind of alluded to that, and certainly people with housing, traffic, and city improvements and stuff like that. So we have assessment with economic impact, that we know the strength and weaknesses of that, if this proceeds.
We don't have any sort of economic impact report, that's, we don't require those for rezoning proposals. I can let you know, as you all are aware, we're in the process for updating our comprehensive plan for the city, and one of the things that we have heard repeatedly from public input, from residents, and property owners, business owners within the city, is the need for more variety in housing options within the city. And so that's really where that comment was going, and that this development would feed into that identified need.
If this project is approved, and the city's prepared to make the necessary capital improvements with sidewalks and things in that area to bring it up to what I call decent standards? What comes first there?
There's no, there's no plan at this point in the capital improvement plan with the city to improve Villas or Limit at this point.
Got it.
Yeah, this is, it's Chris. Yeah, I think that just the one concern is, and it's already been stated, the traffic situation in that area. I don't know if there's much that could be done to alleviate it. So I just, you know, had the city thought about that, about, you know, maybe widening or anything like that, has that ever been brought up? Or, because I know that place gets pretty, pretty busy during the school, during the school year.
It does, and our Public Works Department and Police Department are part of our Development Review Committee and spoke on this item. So the periods of, the main periods of congestion, as I said, are really related to the drop-off and pickup periods. And in talking with our Police Department, that's really limited to about 30 minutes in the morning and about 30 minutes in the afternoon. So they, they have, you know, they are well aware of that.
Any input from the school district with regards to this particular, I noticed that they didn't, there was no input for them for the, for the meeting that was on the 15th?
Uh, no, we didn't have any comments from the school district on this.
Again, so I think in the architectural plan, as Mr. Greenemeyer's proposing with that plat, is to have this cul-de-sacs to minimize traffic. I know, we know the traffic is heavy at times with that area. So the layout is trying to, that he has plans is to try to minimize that with entrance or egress in that area evidently.
So the conceptual site plan that he gave us, that's up here now, is a through street.
Right.
And one thing that we had talked about at our DRC meeting was the potential of a cul-de-sac or some other configuration, and I know that Mr. Greenemeyer had put some thought into that since we've met, so he can speak to that a little bit more when you, when you speak with him.
Okay, thank you.
So I was, as I drove through the area the other day, I was looking at Villas and Limit, and if this was, if it was to go forward, would we have to immediate, make any immediate changes, like the drain to either the storm runoff along either the Villas or Limit to feed into or feed out of a proposed...
So any new development would be required to take care of their stormwater within their site, and basically, when you're looking at stormwater on a site, it's, what we're looking at having it do is not affect anything outside of that particular site. And so that would be up to the development to take care of the stormwater on that site so that it doesn't impact anything outside of that site. So there wouldn't be any improvements at this time in the city right away, or any other properties, and so again, that would all be expected to be taken care of on-site for this property.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there questions for staff?
I did have, found one, you kind of alluded to it earlier about Leavenworth's need for housing, and this is, this, not, we kind of talked about, I'm not quite certain, we get that, what's going to be the cost of these townhouses, these 28 townhouses, to be owned or leased, or whatever the arrangement is there, and the city, we've determined, or we've looked at, this, this city needs this type of housing, we need this?
So that is the, a comment that we routinely hear from folks in the city.
Right.
Is the need for more variety in housing options like this.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so if there are no questions for staff, I will, are there any questions for the applicant who is here? Or, Mr. Greenemeyer, is there anything that you want to add, work that you've done since that meeting that was held on the 15th?
Yeah, I can address some of these things. The operative word on everything that's being displayed up here should be conceptual, because it truly is, Julie had asked me for just an idea of kind of what we had in mind, and this was about the simplest thing we could come up with prior to the DRC meeting. After the DRC meeting and the conversation with Mr. Kitchens about the pickup and drop-off at the school, we had just decided internally that maybe, she's exactly right, a cul-de-sac or a U-shaped street, or something that directs all the traffic onto one street, the kind of more improved street, might be, might be a consideration. We just never bothered to update the conceptual plan because it's, it's just that conceptual. And her comments are exactly, our feelings on this, on this land, or just building in Leavenworth in general, is, Leavenworth seems to be a great place if you're looking for single-family, new single-family houses, or existing single-family houses, but there's just not a whole lot of multifamily or nicer market rate rental units hitting the market. And we've had a lot of luck with the units we've built in Lansing. Recently, we've had a lot of luck with the ones that we've developed in Leavenworth over the last 15, 20 years, and that's what we have in mind here, is the working professional, the retired person. I don't expect to have a whole lot of kids here despite its proximity to, to the school. Fairly, fairly light traffic, I mean, you can tell there's no amenities here, there's no swimming pools, there's no swing sets or anything, it's pretty much just small housing in the 1,000 to 1,200 square foot range. So, yeah, we're, we're not opposed to any other configuration on the streets that makes sense, and really, this is just us getting everything kind of organized and set up for a development down the road. We have no immediate plans, this, if this doesn't break ground for five or 10 years, that wouldn't surprise me. We just, we're able to purchase the land, we like the land, as far as its location on 20th Street, there's not a whole lot of five-acre parcels available anywhere else in town, and so this is kind of just a medium to long-term plan for us.
I do have some questions on you that, since I lived very close there for about 29 years off that area, is that, one of the questions I had, looking at these 28 units, there's, and looking at the surrounding area there with Mike Riley's section there, that's what I call retirement homes, looking at the surrounding area property values of $300,000 to $400,000, what people own in that area probably. So they're concerned with, you know, property value, but also what you're building with these 28 units, what would be the average cost of those units, and can you buy them or rent them, or what's that going to look like, what you're envisioning for those 28 units?
Well, they're all going to be for rent, and they're all going to be maintenance, very similar to what we've done. In fact, Ju, I brought a slideshow of some other properties we have in town, if you, if you feel like a show and tell. I mean, this is in the probably $1,000 to $1,400 a month range. The ones that we're finishing up in Lansing right now are being appraised in around 240 to 260 for the, for the structure. And again, I just want to stress that these are all market rate units, there's no low to moderate income house, or tax credits, there's no city incentives out in this area of town, this truly is market rate, market rate development.
So again, four lease, our rent, 12 to 14 hours a month.
Yep.
And four, maybe, hopefully, year, year leases, not fast turnovers with them, what would be your intent there, would people lease one of these?
The longer...
I understand.
Longer the better.
Well, certainly.
The, if, if this development is anything like the ones we're modeling it off of...
Right.
We end up with people staying, you know, a five to 10-year tenant is not, is not unusual. In some cases, you get a working professional, and they're just in for, in for a class of for Leavenworth, or in for a quick, a quick stay, and they're out. In some other cases, this is where people sell their house, downsize, don't want to cut their, don't want to mow their grass, don't want to, they just want to write one check, and, and that's where they stay for 10, 20 years.
For people who live in that area... For people who live in that area though, it's kind of like nice and nicer, if I'm using that word, in terms of the value of those units and how quality they're built and the quality of those units and the value of it. They're, they're more high-end units instead of, does that make sense to you? They're, the, the niceness of the area and the value of those town-
Yeah, well-
What you're building.
Well, against, uh, the, the slideshow that I brought along with me ju- just purely is, uh, a con- a, a concept. I mean, it's, it's the, what, it's some of the upgrades that you would expect to see in, um, some of the new home developments is, uh, granite countertops and the vaulted ceilings. We have some places with heated floors, they would all ha- all have garages, sprinkler systems, uh, so, so, so no, it's not, it's not a, uh, exercise in seeing how inexpensive you can build something.
Commissioners?
I do have another question. You had, you talked about professional in retirement, so the professional occupant, the retiree, so where do you, where do you get that, where, where do you, where does that lead you, whenever it's right next to a school? So I guess where are you coming up with that data? Do you believe it would be professionally a retiree and does that correlate with your other townhomes with children in, in multifamilies?
Yeah, well, the children are, um, almost non-existent at most of the, I mean, you know, th- there certainly are the, the occasional kid, I could never tell if it's someone's, you know, grandkid or, or, uh, or an occupant. But, uh, in general, it's, it is a working professional or someone kind of recently retired, downsized. And we've had, we've had a lot of luck when we just finished fourteen units, um, in Lansing. Um, they were, every one of them was rented months before it was, uh, wa- was even, even available. Frankly, one of the rea- other reasons we identified this site is there is not a whole lot of big tracts of land, uh, i- in the city limits available, um, to do this, uh, especially at, at a reasonable price. So I, I understand the question as far as the proximity to the school might not make sense, but we don't, we're not single-family house builders, we don't, we don't, w- we're a build and hold, buy and hold company. So, you know, if the, uh, if the plan was to do single-family homes for sale here, we, we wouldn't have, wouldn't have bought in the first place. It's not what we're good at. And there's someone else in town who likes to do that.
Other commissioners in h- there's Chris?
Yeah, it's Chris again. Hey, one more, uh, so if, if I'm not mistaken, you said a little earlier that, that, um, you wouldn't, i- if, if you didn't break ground, say in the next ten years, you wouldn't be surprised. So, so this is not something that you want to start immediately, this is just, uh, you saw an opportunity a- a- and you're looking to, uh, you know, to help the community in that sense, is that, is that what I'm, is that what I understand?
Yeah, th- this is, this is a long-term hold and if we get, um, uh, you know, if we get to this sooner than three to five years, it would surprise me just because I know the, you know, uh, probably eighty or a hundred other lots that we are working on getting planted right now that are, uh, gonna be ready to go sooner than, sooner than this will. And, and our cost to hold, bein- being that it's ag land, our cost to hold this is negligible.
Okay, thank you.
Sherry James, questions?
I don't have any at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
No questions?
Alright, thank you. Alright, so there are no more questions for, um, the commissioners to the applicants. I want to open up the public meeting. Again, as a reminder, uh, if you're gonna, in the room, if you could please come to the podium, identify your name and your address. And succinctly, three to five minutes, tell us what your thoughts are one way or the other. Again, your questions should be, your comments should be directed to us or the city staff. And if we need to have the applicant weigh in, we'll ask the applicant to weigh in.
Yes, sir. Hi, my name's Brian Stevens. I live at two six one four South Twenty-Fifth Street, so that is in the Whispering Hills subdivision to the west of this. Uh, thank you for having us. I do want to say Greenemeyer's done a great job for our community. And I, I, I appreciate what they do for our community. I, I'd like the commission to, um, acknowledge the number of folks that we have online, in person and out in the hallway. This is a, this is something that's really important for us. And I know in a lot of times, these types of meetings, it's a fear of change. And that's what you hear from public comment, that it's just a fear of, of something new in a neighborhood that has been around for twenty, twenty-five years. I have had the privilege of knowing some of these folks for a while and hearing them talk. This is not, uh, fear of change, this is, uh, a fear of being left behind by the city once again. And that's where our public comments are coming in, into play here. So I'll address two issues quickly, um, but both of those issues address what is feeding that fear and what has created this, this presence. First, in the Development Review Committee, as it was stated, uh, there was, uh, traffic congestion, street configuration, utility issues, storm water. I need to clarify, the school backup does not last an hour or thirty minutes. It is, uh, an hour, hour and a half. Cars start lining up at two-thirty. Other, other neighbors can, uh, can attest to that in recent-
In our neighborhood?
Yes, in our neighborhood because this, the school has started the queue from the street instead of starting the queue inside their own, um, uh, parking lot, okay? It's not just school traffic though. Uh, we are a, uh, a, a military community. We have a lot of officers that are going to school. With officers coming in and out every two years, we have moving trucks. I've seen many moving trucks have difficulty getting through Vilas, or, yes, Vilas, uh, back and forth. When we're trying to exit the subdivision and we're, uh, trying to pass a truck, it's almost impassable. The, uh, excuse me. The, also outside of the pickup and drop off, I'd like the commission to consider the school, when it's not COVID time, they also have parent teacher conferences and holiday parties. When they have those holiday parties, there are cars parked all along that street for hours so that they can attend, uh, whatever function it is. So we're not just talking about arrival and dismissal traffic in this area, we're talking a, a, a lot more than, than what has been stated. I'd like the, the commission to, to acknowledge that. I also want to, to bring in, uh, a part of that committee, um, Mr. McDonald from Public Works, um, stated several issues that he had with the proposal, um, and noted that there is likely going to be an organized effort for the city to repair, uh, Limit west of Twentieth and that that is not in the plans. That concerns us. That if we, if we add more traffic to this area and that's not even in the plans, we're gonna have some, some traffic issues. Limit is eighteen feet wide in, in the largest, um, in, in the largest part. It, it gets shorter and it gets bigger, but generally eight feet. Normal car is six feet wide, emergency vehicles are eight feet wide, that doesn't leave a lot of clearance. Limit is twenty-two point three feet wide. Again, car is six feet wide, emergency vehicle eight feet wide, that leaves about eight feet of clearance between the two. I, I won't speak of the details because it is not mine, but everybody here knows of a very tragic story where it was observed that the, the fire trucks had difficulty coming down during the school traffic to come to a fire in our neighborhood and it definitely had to slow down because of that car traffic. That is a public safety concern and we would like that to be addressed before the city considers adding any more volume to that area. The, um, city development regulations are, are very clear. Uh, Article Five, Section five oh five, two-way streets need to be twenty-four feet. Neither one of these are twenty-four feet. However, the city has designated both Limit and Vilas as major thoroughfares, major traffic areas, traffic ways, um, but they don't meet the city's development regulations, want to point that out. My second point and then I'll finish, promise. And if you can pull up the conceptual drawing here, I think if you look at the conceptual drawing, it looks great on paper. And as Mr. McDonald pointed out, um, Vilas and Limit do not look like that. Um, I think if Vilas and Limit looked like that, uh, we probably wouldn't be here. Um, or we'd be, we would be talking about something else. So that, that definitely is, is misleading. Also, in the application, um, I may have read it incorrectly, but, but I thought in the application, it said that they were ready to start building immediately. Like the commission to, to re, relook at that. When the staff of the, um, review committee approved this to go forward, um, there was no mention of the missing items in that proposal. There were, there was no drainage plan. There were no identifications of fire hydrants, there were no sta- statements from the fire chief, and there were no statements of the utilities, where the utilities are, where the utilities will be. That, I, I'm not sure how that passes the committee and gets us to this point. So for, for those reasons, I am pleading with the commission to table this issue so that we may have more public comment and more public input so that we can do this right if we're going to do it. And we're not left behind like many of these people who have lived here twenty-five years, a lot longer than I have, have been left behind. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Rick Kimbrough and I live at twenty-one fifteen Vilas. Uh, this is the property immediately to the west of the proposed development.
Sir, could you please speak up?
Yes, yes.
I just can't hear you on mine.
My name is Rick Kimbrough. I live at twenty-one fifteen Vilas, which is the property immediately to the west of the proposed development. I've lived there forty-five years and before I make a couple of comments, I did want to confirm Brian's comment that, uh, the community is very lucky to have the Greenemeyer family and their projects throughout the many, many years. I worked at a local bank for thirty years and had an opportunity to do business with Jeremy's grandfather Mac and his father Mike, his uncle David, and now Jeremy. Jeremy grew up with my son and I don't think there's any question that they, uh, do not provide quality and professional developments, whether it be commercial or residential. When I was on the planning commission many years ago, sat in your chairs, the first thing that we considered was public safety. And, uh, every discussion started with fire protection, police protection, emergency medical assistance, and that's what I'm most concerned about. My wife and I are seventy years old. We want to be able to know that if we have an emergency, whether it's a fire, heart attack, stroke or whatever, we can be taken care of as soon as possible. The only way I think this can happen is if we consider Vilas and Limit Street being widened. And like I say, that's my main concern. I know other people have similar concerns or other concerns, but that's really why I'm here tonight. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Kevin Baker. I live at twenty-one oh one Limit Street. I want to echo what those two just said there. I also think that Greenemiers do, do a good job in Leavenworth and we're pleased to have them as well. My biggest complaint around here is the streets, just like everybody's been complaining about. It's, it's zone residential right now because the streets have not been changed since the eighteen hundreds. The street that I live on, he said, is eighteen foot wide. The cars are palling up around the side of the street there at school time and there's no way an emergency vehicle can get down through there. We can't even get through there to get to our house sometimes. So I'm not gonna sit there and complain about all the stuff that, as far as getting to, to my own house. But I, I would like to say that before we can rezone anything, we surely should fix the problems that we have going on in those, with those two streets right now. They really need to be rebuilt, not come in and put little Band-Aids around there so we, so people can get around there for the time being. It needs to be all reconstructed, so I would like for you to table this as well until we, until we do get some kind of resolution or fix the streets until, um, to make sure we don't have this problem again.
So I'm Janice Baker. I live at twenty-one oh one Limit with my husband. I want to say that the infrastructure around our facility, we have been there twenty-five years, twenty, twenty-three years. The infrastructure around the house is not set up, it never has been set up. And we have seen increased traffic for twenty-three years come down our, our road on Limit. I work from home, I have a camera that sits on my driveway. Cars turn around in my driveway on a daily basis, numerous cars on a daily basis. My son had to drive on the wrong side of the street just this week to get home because he couldn't pass, to pass the cars or sit in a line for forty minutes and wait for the line to move. He comes up a hill and over a hill to get to home. Now, I'm gonna tell you, the speed limit on that road is not abided by, it goes very fast. Subject safety is an issue. I want to echo what Rick said. As a homeowner there, if I had an emergency, there is nowhere for the cars to go, nowhere for the cars to go. There is no way an ambulance or a fire, fire truck could make it to my home. Absolutely, positively no way. The other thing I would say, state is on Limit Street, I have two grown children now and I still do this today. I do not pass a car on Limit Street. I pull over and I stop and then I let them go around. I have no problem with, um, progressing forward, but the way the streets currently sit, it is a very dangerous situation. We're talking about twenty-eight units, you're talking fifty-plus cars, every car has more, every, every home has more than one car. My home, my home has six. So I'm just gonna say, we need to consider the volume of traffic hitting those roads and safety. I watch fire trucks come down that road, they can barely come down Limit Street.
My name is Jeff Think, live at twenty-one sixteen Vilas. I have to disagree with Mr. Stevens. He said Vilas is twenty-two? It's actually probably thirty-five because they use my front yard. To turn in. I have a five and a four-year-old that like to pick up leaves. That's, and, uh, you say, and Julie, they need these houses? What's with the property on Eisenhower with good roads and Eisenhower getting redone? Comment?
Thank you. Are your concerns as most safety? I understand that, thank you.
Safety and what's wrong with, uh, the land on Eisenhower?
My understanding is that's, property doesn't belong to the applicant, it belongs to another company, so they're developing houses out there, um, according to their plan.
That's it?
I can't speak for the people who own the property out on Twi- on Eisenhower.
I thought you'd say you'd speak, I'd speak to you, then you speak to Mr. Greenemeyer.
No, he's already stated that he doesn't do, uh, houses for sale, he's only doing rentals and he's doing townhomes. So I don't think, sorry, but I don't think, unless you could rephrase your question, I don't see how I could ask it formally.
I'll be back up.
Okay. I'll be here.
What other areas have you looked at?
Oh.
Being Eisenhower.
Got it, alright, so, sir.
What property, uh, Eisenhower and what?
Right there on Eisenhower, the-
I think the question is-
The one you guys just spent millions on, that's empty.
Has the, have you looked at property alone?
I think he's referring to the, the business and industrial park.
Yes.
Okay, that property's not zone residential?
Sure, but in, in general, didn't we-
Sure, but in general, didn't we know what other areas were considered before this?
Yeah. So, Mr. Greenemeyer, is there any other area that you were looking at prior to purchasing this property?
I mean, the whole county, I guess. It's, I mean, we own land, we own land in Lansing that we're actively working on developing. We own some land in Leavenworth. We, it's, I guess I don't, I don't understand, I'm not understanding the question.
I guess maybe the question, again, just to paraphrase you, correct me if I'm wrong. The question is, is that, other than this particular piece of property, did you look at anything else in the, within the city of Leavenworth before you purchased this property for development?
Yeah, I mean, this was presented to us as an opportunity, as an opportunity, and the price made sense, and we liked the location, so.
Because right now, the entrance or exit will be right at center of my house. You can put your roundabout in my front yard, I guess.
If I can make a comment, just while I'm here on this, because we're trying to clarify what you're saying, but it's kind of like, at this moment, Mr. Greenemeyer has looked at purchasing or getting this land, which is available, accessible at this moment, even though they may, could build other locations. I don't think that's the issue at this moment with our commission. It's only discussed of this land at this location and discussion on that, even though maybe they could build elsewhere. I don't think that's the issue that we're dealing with right now. It's this location.
And safety.
Okay, got it. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm asking what we're dealing with, what we're going to do with their request for building at this location, only at this moment.
Okay.
Okay?
And, uh?
I got it.
Uh, what's Julie's last name?
Pearlie.
Okay, I'll be talking to you tomorrow. Are you, are you still in code enforcements?
I'm the director of planning and community development.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I have one other comment. Again, Janice Larkin Baker. I think the other thing that's important to consider is, you are in a residential area. I'm going to tell you, my home sits at the, it's worth over a half million dollars. So, the thought of, first and foremost, infrastructure and safety. But secondly, putting a multifamily housing unit in a fully residential area is concerning to me. Additionally, I want to add, Mr. Kimbrough, how many cars were parked on the roads the other day that you counted?
Last Friday, I counted 153 cars lined up from the entrance to the school to...
Yeah, we're not going, we, if people are speaking, we need to have them come to the podium because our recording system can't pick up people in the audience.
Yes, last Friday, I counted 153 cars parked along Vilas, 22nd Street, and Limit Street. They went all, I think the end of the line was at Jerry and Linda Heinselman's property.
So, that's, so that's all the way down Vilas, all the way down 22nd, and all the way back down Limit?
In addition, one of the problems is, a lot of parents will drive against the traffic on Vilas and drive west, and do a U-turn in the intersection of 22nd Vilas. I counted 11 cars that did that, to get in line without having to go all the way around. Once that line is not available to get in on Vilas, they'll turn left on 22nd Street and do a U-turn. They don't pull into driveways to turn around. They do a U-turn in my yard so they can get in line. Once that line is down at the end of 22nd Street, then they'll go and turn around in Kevin and Janice's property or the Heinselman property. So, that's concerning too, especially by the time people are doing U-turns in the intersection. There are children that are trying to cross that street, getting into Whispering Hills, so.
Thank you.
Again, no infrastructure. The streets were bad before the school was put in, and then the school was put in, and it's just continued to get worse. Additionally, if it is a thorough street, you might as well be prepared for the parents to park there and walk up, because that's what happens in Edgewood.
Hello, my name is James Hassel. I'm new to this neighborhood. I moved in in July of this year. Something I didn't realize.
What's your address?
I'm sorry, 2323 South 24th Street.
Thank you.
When I purchased this property, we did it strategically. We looked at the location for schooling, a safe place for our kids to go play in the neighborhood, safe place for them to get out and do the things that kids like to do, play with friends. And because we live in close proximity to our schools, they do not provide busing for our, for our kids. We have five kids, three elementary-aged kids, and one middle school and one high school. So, what you see in this neighborhood is a lot of children with mothers walking to this elementary school. This creates a huge safety concern when you add the increased traffic of 28 units, or up to 56 vehicles going in and out of Vilas Street and Limit Street. Even if they propose doing a cul-de-sac, which empties out onto Limit Street, that still presents an issue, because most people who are trying to avoid the traffic from the school go down 22nd Street and turn left on Limit Street to get out of the neighborhood. My children, the two older children, ride bikes. They have to go through all this traffic. So, if the increased traffic of 50 more, 56 more cars every day, that increases the security risk. The safety of my children and the rest of the children in that neighborhood. I haven't counted the number of children that walk back and forth, but I see a lot of them. I see a lot of bikes being ridden by kids. I'll tell you what, I don't want to be the parent who has a police officer coming to my door and telling me my kid's been run over by, by a car because of safety concerns that weren't addressed here at this, at this meeting. Nobody in the room wants that. Nobody in the hallway wants that. Even people who are online, who couldn't be here tonight, don't want that. I don't know of anybody in this commission that would want a phone call or a police officer showing up their door about one of their kids being run over because of increased traffic in this neighborhood. And I also tell you what, I didn't realize the infrastructure concerns either. They're minimal compared to the safety concerns I have, but the infrastructure is not there for this townhome project. The water pressure's already low in the neighborhood. I don't remember, I think your name's Julie?
Mm-hmm.
There is, there is no storm drainage infrastructure on Limit Street. It's all, it used to be farmland, so it's all natural drainage. So, to bring in 26 units worth of concrete that doesn't absorb water is going to cause a water drainage issue. And where's it going to go? If you look at the top topography, which is not shown in this, it's going to go south, down into lower-lying areas into the houses. But again, I'm here for the safety of my children and my family. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Heather Hassel, same address. I can understand why the city hall would be attracted to this proposal. Everybody's thinking, can I put this down? Okay, sorry. Everybody's thinking about money, and that is important. The economics of this place is important. However, what I can see is, a proposal to bring in two totally different types of people. Right now, you have single families, you have military families. He said that it would be professionals coming here. I don't understand what professionals are going to come into an apartment building next to a school with low water pressure, and in a neighborhood where it's a bunch of families and children. He was saying there's not going to be children. There's no way to guarantee that, as well as who, the professionals he's talking about, who is going to want to come and live in the middle of a bunch of kids, if they're looking for a place that's quiet away from kids? So, you're bringing in two different worlds. I believe that in the upfront, you would be bringing in money, but it would quickly go, and you're going to lose a lot of the families that are here now, because it's going to, like she said, it's going to drop the value of our homes. We just purchased our home. We love Leavenworth. We love the family enrichment, and, and we had thought about retiring here. We can't do that if this proposal goes through. Granted, I think that if you, you could work with the school and change, you know, the way, pick up and drop off and all that goes, but it's not going to change the infrastructure. And I'm quite surprised at this city council that would bring in a school when the infrastructure wasn't there, and now even consider bringing in an apartment complex when things are not taken care of first. That's like just asking for trouble. Now, I drive those roads a lot more than my husband does. Even if you go around Habelm, which is kind of like that circle, there is not enough room. I have almost been in an accident at least every day, because I don't feel safe sometimes with my daughter trying to bike home from school. I have had to go against traffic so I can get to the school to pick up another child with head-on, you've got head-on collisions almost. There's no police. There's no regulation there. There's nobody helping from the city. And that's very disappointing and disheartening, because it says loud and clear, we're not being cared about. The other problem is, it's not just during schooltime. There is a lot of traffic, and even outside of schooltime, I have run into problems where I have gone off the road. I have almost hit a sign. I'm going into people's yards. I'm sorry. I don't know who they are, but we aren't going to kill ourselves. We have stopped and pulled off the road because it is not big enough. I am begging and pleading you today, don't let a solution for today become a problem for tomorrow. And if you let this proposal go through, that is what you will be doing. You will lose the good income and the economics of the people that are there now to the city for a quick fix. It is not the solution. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jerry Heinselman. I own the property to the south of where he's wanting to build. I have 11 acres there. All the water from his lot runs onto my property. Up till the last year, I could mow my ditch. This last year, or two or three years ago, they redid the ditch on 22nd Street and widened it. And since they did that, more of the water comes my way. So, the ditch along my, on the west end of my property is a lot more wet. I can't mow it. I gotta weed eat it or let it grow up about three feet tall like normal. But that is my biggest concern, is water runoff, and plus depreciating the value of my house and property. I bought the property because I wanted no neighbor right next door, okay? And that's why I bought 11 acres worth. Bakers were already there. I bought there. I had to pay for a sewer main extension all the way to the property from behind, on my property, back in the back where it goes over to the fire station. So, there's a sewer main there now for him. I had to pay for gas lines, electrical lines, everything to be put to that property when I built. It was 18 years ago. Jerry Riley bought the property across the road about a year later. The sign was up for one day. I called to see if I could buy it, and it was sold already. Okay? So, he bought it himself. He's, he was going to develop it. I asked him after he did the subdivision up by 20, on 20th Street. I asked him one day. I said, are you going to do, develop that other one now? He told me, it's too expensive, because the city won't let him do it without redoing Vilas and Limit, is what he told me. So, it was too expensive for him to do it, because the city wouldn't let him do it without improvements on Vilas and Limit. So, why can we rezone it and make it for duplexes, which would be worse yet, without doing improvements on both streets? Because that's what he said he had to do at that time. And he actually offered me to buy the place five or six years ago, but I thought, well, if, if you don't, if you can't, you know, do what you want with it now, and without improvements till the street gets improved, there's no use. I didn't have to worry about it, you know, more or less. So, I think that it ought to be a single-family residence like it was, and the way it's zoned. It had one house on it before. Mr. Riley tore it down, so it ought to be a single-family resident again. And that's what I was expecting, or maybe two, one on each street. But to rezone it and put all this other stuff in, I mean, I paid for all that stuff out of my pocket, and I will get nothing out of it, because, and he'll get all the use out of it too. And who, like I said, my water pressure will probably drop, even though, if they put that many units in there. And I think it's going to depreciate the value of my house badly. I mean, my house is probably worth a half a million dollars too, you know, in property, and right, if you sell the house, you know, after you get all these duplexes across the street. And I have no intention on moving. I moved to town years ago, because my wife lived in town. We've been married for 30 years, and, or plus, you know, but anyhow, I grew up in the country. I wanted a country setting, and she wanted it in town. So, we made a compromise. We're at the edge of town. We got a lot of acreage, so nobody can bug us. We can do what we want. Of course, I am concerned about the street. It's been that way forever. Five or six years ago, the culvert started caving in up by the school when they built the school. They've never put an extension on it and fixed it. It's a really bad road hazard. I mean, there's that much of the road that's caving off, and they won't do anything about it. So, why didn't our city do something about some of the streets like that, instead of putting asphalt down by Leavenworth paper supply that goes down to the river than nothing? They just asphalted that. They spent bunches of money on this parking lot across the street that only the city employees park in. I mean, why don't we improve Limit Street so they can do something, and work with our schools, so maybe the schools can actually put more parking in? It's one of the biggest complaints I have about the city is, they don't work with the schools too. Like, we spent all that money on sports field, but they're scared of vandalism, so they don't let the Leavenworth schools use it. They're going to build their own stuff now. That's ridiculous. We're just wasting more money. So, we have to pay for both of those things, so why don't we work together with the schools more? There's a lot more green space out in front of Henry Elementary. They could put more parking there. So, that's my opinion. I, I think it's just going to kill the value of the neighborhood, and I think there ought to just be a single-family residence.
First off, I'd like to say thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing me to speak. I'll say the bottom line upfront before I introduce myself. Why not develop it as single-family, low-density housing if it's to be developed? That's the bottom line upfront. I'm Storm Savage. I live at 3032 Somerset Drive. My wife and I live in the Edgewood Housing Development, of which I am the homeowners' president. Therefore, I have a vested interest and have populated this with all of our homeowners at the time, which is 26 homes. If you're wondering where that is, Edgewood is between the firehouse and the elementary school on the south side. Let me also give you a little background of my experience. I'm a civil engineer, a traffic engineer. My studies are in hydrosystems, drainage, water retention, and a master's in business. I'm currently the civil engineer for Fort Leavenworth, and presently sit on the Leavenworth Water Board. With that, I have prior 20 mil, over 20 years of military experience. Prior to that, and the reason I mention this, I worked in Northern Virginia in Fairfax County, highly densely populated in the east, very unpopulated in the west at that time, where development was going great gangbusters. I lived and worked on both sides of the aisle. I was the master planning and master planning board personnel for Fairfax County, where we talked about development of homes and how we initiate this, and take the homeowners' views and opinions and property values into full perspective. I also worked there later on for Duberry and Davis, the largest firm in Virginia, the third-largest developmental firm on the east coast at that time, where my job was to go ahead and develop. Develop at all costs of what was bottom-line profitable, whether it be single-family dwellings, multiplex, duplex, quadplex apartments, and/or townhomes, and all the aspects that went with that. I know that's a long litany, but what I'm trying to show is, I do have a little of experience in this. When we moved here, my wife and I, we retired from the military. I've been to Fort Leavenworth multiple times throughout my over 20-year career, living in multiple areas in the Leavenworth community. When it was time to retire, we decided we wanted to live in this community because... When it was time to retire, we decided we wanted to live in this community because of what it provides us, our children, the, not only the structure of being close to Kansas City but not being in Kansas City, the community, the family, the schools, those aspects. And when we decided to build a home, we decided to build in Edgewood, right there on 20th, because not only were, was it single-family zoned, which I looked into because that's part of my background, but then also what we could build for the dollars we have because that was the most important because we'd saved for 30 years of my career. With that in mind, the homes there are very close anywhere from $3,000 to $350,000. So property values are very high on my list, let alone the other aspects that I've mentioned. With that in mind, knowing that it's low-density, single-family dwelling, and with my background, it will, without a doubt, negatively affect my property values of my home. Now, we don't plan on moving in any time soon. We have children that are still in college. And this may be our final home. But more importantly, if it's not, I still have at least 10 years of working. Therefore, if we're talking about development in that 10-year period, if I ever did decide to sell the home, it would be during that period of time of development of this particular property. And my value of my home will drop. If anybody says it will not, we can have a long discussion because I can show you time and time again and personally not only experienced it, but personally made it happen, which I wish I had not, but I did not have the experience at the time to know the feeling of the families that I was involving. So as I said, no matter what is built, duplex, triplex, apartments, or townhouses, it will affect the bottom line. There's no two ways about it. Now, as to the traffic, no matter what the configuration we work, even with imminent domain, there's two choke points in that area. One is Vilas and one is Limit, where they go ahead and intersect with 20th. Even with imminent domain and changing the traffic patterns and extending and making multiple lanes, what we have is a school entrance and exit that are so close to 20th, they would have to be completely redesigned. Otherwise, the backup from the light at Vilas, let alone now having, most probably being required to put in a light at Limit, creates issues of multiple lane backups, especially during school periods, which are not a short period. We've counted for two hours, hour and 40 minutes, I used to have a register of it, of about third, anywhere from 18 to 32 cars parked in our neighborhood, not even in the line around the school. Yet, they're really not supposed to be parked there and would block driveways. And twice, we've had an issue of an ambulance getting into the neighborhood. So what I'm saying is to make an infrastructure that would work, would be exorbitant in cost, that brings me to the taxpayer, us. We would have to incur that, why? In Northern Virginia and Fairfax, we started to have to have the developers support that infrastructure since they were adding multiple units to the use of the roads. What they were doing when I got there was not requiring the developer to put money in. Therefore, those narrow roads were not widened and then it became much worse for traffic. But with that in mind, for my personal neighborhood and the 25 other residents, as we leave the neighborhood, Edgewood, there's only about 100 yards to 20th.
I'm gonna ask you to pause for just a minute. Apparently, this phone line drops after a period of time. I'm not sure why it does that.
Start from the top.
No, no, I can't do this again.
Sounds like they lost audio about a minute ago, so.
Please enter your access code followed by the pound. To enable audio control, please enter your audio PIN followed by a dot. This conference will now be recorded.
Again.
It'll pick up a second recording, that's all.
Okay, can everybody online hear us now?
Yeah, we're in business.
Okay, sorry about that. Apparently, the phone line drops after a period of time. I'm not sure what that time is, but we'll try to keep an eye on it. Okay, thanks.
So we've seen this maybe about three minutes of what he was saying, FYI.
Okay, you can just kinda, we'll let him just continue on.
Well, thank you very much for your patience. To do a quick recap of just a few minutes, the aspect of single-family low-density and why not develop that area for single-family low-density, but not only will the property values drop from my experience on both sides of the fence as not only a public servant in the private industry of developing areas and being the direct cause of property value changes, all the way to being the actual person living in those neighborhoods and now translating that and coming forward 30 years, 25 years to Leavenworth, where we live in the Edgewood community, we also have the concern not only of our property values, which I've spent 30 years saving for that home and paying that home and having that beautiful home, but also from the aspect of the infrastructure. And as I was saying, we have always in, when we did this before and found that the community, the county, or the city was not having the developer help offset the development of the infrastructure of roads, of stormwater, of sidewalks, of sewage, of water systems itself that go ahead and add new taxing on the pressure of the water in the area, that we found that what happened was it degraded the values even more. And that having the developer help offset the cost, bottom line, helped us not having to use our taxpayer dollars for the profit margin of a private company. Now, in the profit margin, profit and loss margin of a development of this size, there are not a large enough number of units that the developer, and this is my opinion from my experience, would have a large enough profit margin to be able to actually take the expenses of that infrastructure on and be of any value to the, to the developer because they're not getting a large enough profit margin. Therefore, it comes back on to the city or the county or the municipality to improve the infrastructure for the new number of personnel and dwellings that are there. Therefore, it goes back to our taxes again. And so not only do we have an area that becomes much more congested, not only do we have an area that will now have, the city have to pay for the infrastructure development, but then we also have the concerns, and this may not have been translated when the recording went off, but the traffic itself. Now, you've heard many times about the traffic and how challenging it is, but the question is why? And that's because the entrance to the school, both the north and the south entrance, and the entrance to the Edgewood development, which is only about 100 yards from 20th Street, would become choke points of not having long enough turn lanes and traffic lanes to evenly accommodate the number of cars that are there as we continually increase the number of residents. And on average, in apartments and/or townhouses, it's about 2.3 cars per unit. So now you have a larger number of cars in a much smaller concentrated area using the same roads, the only roads, to get out onto 20th Avenue. So here we go again, more congestion. So I know I've used up more time than I should and I definitely appreciate everyone listening, but here's my bottom, the end question. If this is truly for the community and keeping the communities at the high-quality level they are, then it should stay as low-density, single-family dwellings. If it is not for the true benefit of the community it's going to affect, especially where I live, then it is strictly for a profit at the expense of our community. And I understand profit, that's what you're in business for. But my concern is at what expense to the quality of the neighborhood that I've bought into, that I live in, that I'm a member of, and that I plan on being a member of and on many boards for many, many years. Thank you very much for your time and I truly appreciate you considering leaving it as single-family dwellings. And I truly hope that our developer, because I know I'm supposed to go this way and not directly, would truly consider doing multiple, single-family, low-density homes there that would complement our community and still bring a profit to their business. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. My name is Peter Campbell. I live at the end of Vilas Street, 2311 Vilas Street, Leavenworth. Lived there about 15 years. I have three children and my wife also works at the elementary school. My three children went to that school and have now moved up into the high school. One thing about that school, I wanted a caveat, what Storm Savage and Mr. Heitzelmann said, is the fact that at some point Riley was going to develop that land and he owned it, but it wasn't profitable for certain reasons. And that was then, this is now. So what's changed between Riley, he was also a very big developer, if he couldn't do it because it was too expensive, he had to improve the road systems or the drainage and everything else, did that requirement just stop? And I'm kinda asking the commissioners that question. Is there a requirement to improve that infrastructure before anything else can be added to that region? That could be anything. But I, I challenge you to ask that question and do the research. Talk to Riley, he still lives here. Ask him why he didn't do it and figure that out. One other thing, all the voting members, I don't know, there's plenty of people that are online right now, and I don't know which members that actually have a say in whether this goes through or not, but I challenge all of you to come to Leavenworth, to the school, between 2:45 and 3:30 and just watch. And don't, don't take people's word for it. Come here, the weather's gonna be nice this week. Come on out tomorrow and just check it out. Try to drive. Come in Limit Street or Vilas Street, whichever one, and check it out. If you're, if you have a voting voice, then you need to come here and you need to see it for your own eyes. Drive that street, see the kids walking, riding their bikes in that crazy traffic congestion. Just check it out and then you'll understand what everybody's talking about. It's not pleasant, it's not pretty. It's only a certain amount of time each day, but the hazard or the danger is real. Anyway. One other thing I wanted to say, just in the general consensus of living in a neighborhood. If I wanted to live in the city, I would. If I wanted to live in a duplex, I would. If I wanted to live in a 25-story high-rise, I would. I chose to live in a neighborhood because that's what I enjoy living in. It's kind of a progression. When I was a kid, I had to do whatever I had to do. But as an adult with children, you decide to move into a neighborhood near an elementary school and you kind of expect it to remain what it was designed to be. And the reason the town put it as single-family dwellings is because that's what the town wanted it to remain. So what's the change? Have we decided that if a town starts changing their zoning laws all over the place just to make a buck? Well, why not another gas station there? Why not a 25-story high-rise apartment complex? Why not a nightclub? It's because it's not zoned for that. Zoned as a neighborhood, single-family dwellings. Leave it that way. It's pretty simple. And I, I want to ask a question to Mr. Greenway indirectly, but what's the plan if you, if the town says no, it's not going to be duplexes? What's Mr. Greenway's plan? What's he gonna do with that property?
Sir, I, just a reiteration of what I said a while ago, which is our holding, you know, we bought the land because we liked it. Our holding cost is basically zero because it's an ag zoning, so it'll probably sit there and develop for some amount of time.
Would he plan on selling it to another developer that does have the intention of doing single-family homes or not? Or does he, I think he stated before that he's not in that business. So he is not going to develop single-family homes. The only thing he's going to do is the duplexes are not doing anything. Is that correct?
It's the way it's written, yes.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Pretty much done, Bernabé? My wife? Am I missing anything? Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Teri Rogers. Our address in this community is yet to be determined and I'll explain why. My husband and I have been searching for a nice parcel of land to buy for about eight-plus years. We finally found our perfect piece of property. It's 10 acres, it's right adjacent to the Bakers who spoke earlier. It's kind of in the corner of Limit and 22nd. And so we're gonna be affected by this in more ways than I even knew before I got here. So we were outside of that 200-foot notification zone, but luckily, the Bakers called me about four o'clock today to tell us about this. We were unaware. I've got two big concerns after listening to all of this. And then, and so I'd like to make a few comments about those and then I have a question for Julie and the staff after that. So my, my first comment is, we've found this perfect piece of property, heavily wooded, creek runs through it, it's beautiful. And we've invested a lot of time and effort before we closed in August. We've engaged an architect and we're about to start on a half-a-million-dollar house over there. It's our forever home. And we've, we've worked hard for that and we've, we've done, you know, a lot of searching to find the perfect location. And then today I find out, all this could change. Our property values could really be affected by this. Now, I'm considering, you know, talk to my husband, maybe we don't build our, our dream home on that property. I mean, this is a big deal to all of us in this community. So that's a real concern for me. I ask you to please leave it low-density, single-family. You know, it's why we purchased where we did, it's apparently where our future neighbors, why they purchased where they did. My second concern is about the emergency vehicles. My 86-year-old mom who has serious health problems lives with us. It sounds like it's already gonna be a little risky getting a, an emergency vehicle in during the school times, but now if we have more neighbors with more cars, what happens when my mom dies or, you know, can't, I'm really concerned about this. What happens if the ambulance can't get to her in time? The question I have for Julie is, I briefly read the packet that you all had and that, you know, you read at the beginning of this meeting, I briefly read it before I came here tonight. And I was a little surprised because the staff says this potentially will affect values, the infrastructure is not there, but then it says, the staff recommends that you move forward with this project. So my question for Julie and the staff is, why are you making the recommendation, recommendation to the commissioners that this project move forward? And with that, I will yield, but I would appreciate an answer to that question. Thank you very much.
Yep, so the staff recommendation is based on all of the departments within the city that reviewed this through the Development Review Committee. That includes planning, public works, police, fire, city manager, city clerk, all, all the departments. And so you've got the minutes from that and the comments from that review, the issues that were brought up in that review by the different departments and professional staff throughout the city, or items that the various staff members felt could be addressed with the proposal at the time of development.
So, excuse me, before you start. The public meeting's been going for an hour and 20 minutes. I'm gonna allow it to go for another 15 and then I'm gonna go ahead and call it, I'll call it at that point. I, just to summarize, what I've heard basically is there's a question about the infrastructure. The infrastructure, the roads, the sewer runoff, the radio runoff, the narrowness of the roads, the safety, public concerns, those are all valid concerns. What I would ask of those who are coming forward, is there anything else that's new that you would like to tell us in the last 20 minutes that we've got, or 15 to 20?
The only other question I had was, was there a proposal for stormwater runoff at all, ever written up or designed or anything? Because I, I own the property across the street.
Yes, sir.
At this point, there has not been. An engineering, an engineering plan would be required at the time of site plan approval, which is, would have to come back through city staff for review.
So we need to get, you shouldn't be able to rezone it without So we need to get, you shouldn't be able to rezonate without knowing what you're going to do. That's my opinion, because it's going to put twice as much water as if you had single-family deals. Plus, even if you do, you're putting a lot more water right in that little ditch, runs right around my house, kind of round back, and it goes to the ditch, it's on the east side of my barns, over on the other side. And so you'd have to put stormwater drains all the way to that other creek to have any capability of getting it past my property and on down New Creek.
Mr. Heisman, can you talk about how bad the street floods?
Oh, yeah, my God. Sometimes that street floods so bad that I have a shed in my backyard, and it gets within a foot of it. But, and then, it looks like a river between me and Baker sometimes, right there. If it gets really bad stormwater, it gets like a river right there. So you're going to increase water in that, it is going to definitely take out my shed and then whatever else goes on down. I know the school got away with putting some catch ponds up there, and then, who knows what that does? It just slows it down, but I, it just makes a mosquito hole is what it does. Anyhow, that was my only thing, is was there ever anything definite on that? So I think it ought to be canceled, you know, not approved, definitely, or tabled for five years or something, because it's just, it's ridiculous to try to do it with the way it is. Not a full plan.
Okay, I do have two folks online who have said that they wanted to make some comments, so I may ask that you take those comments first. Kathleen Berger. Kathleen, you had some comments?
Hi, yes, I live on 2235 Headbound Drive. We've lived here for 20 years. My main point is there, I know that one of the considerations is providing other price points of properties, and I noticed on the map that there is a multifamily zoning between Limit and Vila, or Limit and Tonganoxie Road, so there could be something built there by whoever, but it's already zoned that way, or it's targeted for future zoning for that way. So it wouldn't have to be necessarily rezoned in this area to provide that price point for the city. And then number two, we, I fully supported the school being built, even though we knew there would be traffic issues. I had hoped that the street infrastructure would be improved. That issue still needs to be addressed, whether or not this zoning is done or not. It can't drop. I saw a lady that was parked before 2 o'clock and was still there at 3 o'clock on Vila, right at the entrance to the school. Why are people being allowed to queue up for an hour and 15 minutes before school is let out? It's ridiculous. We literally feel trapped in our homes for about 45 minutes to an hour every day, because you literally cannot safely get in or out of our neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration and for the chance to speak to these safety concerns. And I really hope that you vote not to rezone for this multifamily unit.
Okay, and then Anita Duke had indicated a while ago that she wanted to speak. Ms. Duke, are you still on? Did you have some comments?
Uh, yes, I am still on, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
I'm sorry?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I live at 2229 Vila. We've been here about four years. My daughter rented the home a couple, four years before that. And, of course, she discussed it also, but the school has been an issue, I mean, you do, I agree with Kathy Burke, you stay at home for an hour, so Lord forbid there be an emergency, because you are pulling into oncoming traffic when you try to go down Vila, because the cars are lined up. And there are times that cars are going west on Vila, and you're having to go around cars parked on the side, and you're basically going head-on. Now, granted, everybody drives a little slow during that time, but it is a hazard. Even if you try to get around the limit, it's the same problem. People are pulling out of the school, so you're lined up trying to get out off of limit also, out of our neighborhood. That's a traffic concern, everybody's brought that up. I live on the cul-de-sac of 22nd Terrace, which is just a block from the 22nd Street. I have people coming in at the school time, and they park in our cul-de-sac to line up for the school. That's how far back it goes. And it is an issue. Also, the water issue, I agree with them. I've worked with the city a little bit, we've had water sitting on a hill in our backyard. One of the things that's not been discussed tonight, other than one of the gentlemen talking about the sewer issues, look north of Vila. That is all a hill, and it runs from 20th Street, which is a hill at the top, if you go up 20th, all the way to the end of the whole neighborhood. That water, where do you think it goes? It goes right south. There's natural streams, which the city said there's actually natural streams in our neighborhood. My house sits on one, underground stream. We have a big water problem. There's houses on 22nd Terrace that have water in the basement coming from the underground When they're talking about improving Limit and Vila, it absolutely has to be done, but it's not just because of the traffic flow, it's because of the water coming off that hill, and it's got to get diverted. We just got recoded, 100 flood, 100-year flood. If you go to the flood zone, it goes all on that south-side corner of 22nd Street. That is part of the flood zone, those houses on that corner. And you're going to add water flow by putting a development in? I just really think it needs to be really looked at and assessed on the traffic issue, the water issue. And I think the zoning, the rezoning for multifamily, I do have a little bit of concerns on property value. I do think it will absolutely affect us. And this is my retirement home. We bought it as a retirement home, because the lots over here are one of the largest in the city. In the whole city of Leavenworth, you go find another neighborhood that has the lot sizes that these homes have, and we're investing our retirement here. My concern on townhouses, whatever happens 15, 20 years from now, is it going to be rezoned to HUD housing? Again, it all affects the property value. I think it needs to be tabled, and I think, I think the single-family homes, you could build 10 family homes, if you look at the map that they have upstairs. On the sizing of those lots, on the south side of 22nd Street, you could build 10 nice single-family homes in that section of acreage that we're talking about. That being said, I think that's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you. One more shot? Yes, sir.
Yes, it's Mr. Savage again. I apologize, I forgot one comment that has not been brought up yet to the board on my notes. It is the tax assessment and tax revenue cost-benefit analysis. In other words, if that area were developed as zoned, using the average lot sizes in that area, it would generate certain amount of tax revenue for the city. If it were put into the multifamily-type zoning that is being requested, what is the change in the revenue, more or less? And does that revenue, and I already know the answer just from the number of units, but does that revenue offset the cost of infrastructure development? Even if we had money brought in by the developer, it would still be substantial to the city to develop the stormwater runoff, the utilities, the sewage, the water, and any, and the storm drain, of course, as I said, the runoff, but underground and above. Downstream, beyond the property's effective, as required by law. So that was my question. Has there been a tax assessment versus tax revenue study completed to show the board that it is something that would even be possibly manageable with the taxpayer's money? I don't know if that's been done yet.
I'd have to ask staff.
No, we don't, we don't do those for typical rezoning requests.
Okay. I was going to say, from past experience, usually with the number of units and the size of units we're talking about, we usually don't see the money generated for this type of civil infrastructure requirements, and I know those from bacon wages to standard wages to here every day from my current job, which is extremely expensive. Thank you for letting me say that.
Sir, I might just add one more thing, just real quick, sir. All right, is something new?
It is.
All right. And then ma'am, you have the, I promise you get the next one.
So Ms. Julie said that she consulted with the different departments and agencies in the city before making a recommendation to the council to go forward with this proposal, but in the own report here, it says that the police department recommended the school district go back and contact the city to discuss options to address the traffic along Vila Street. And down below that, it says that by the police department, Henry Leavenworth Elementary, traffic backs up as far as the proposed subdivision. And that, to me, does not sound like a recommendation from the police department to go forward with this. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Hi, my name's Renati Campbell. I live at 2311 Vila Street, and I work at Henry Leavenworth for the last five years. I walk to and from work, rain, snow, or shine, and I just want to say, I understand Mr. Greenemeyer, this is a big dollar item for him, but I just want to say for the residents of the neighborhood and that area, he is passionate about this project, but we are passionate about that field, the nature, the owls, the deer, the woodchucks, that is, you know, I want to speak on behalf of everyone for that reason as well, because that hasn't been brought up. So, thank you.
Excuse me, before I go, if I could ask you a question?
Yes.
What position do you have at the elementary school?
Building secretary.
Oh, so has the traffic issue been addressed with the Board of Education?
We are addressing it.
Any plans that you could share with us, or so that's something we get from the board?
That, you'll have to speak with the board for that, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
I would just add, though, I don't know who the Edgewood, who they, who they took this from, Edgewood, but no matter what they do, because they are surveying, and I think they're trying to wrap the traffic around the back of the, the school, you're still going to have the bottleneck on Limit and 20th Street, because you only have one entrance and one exit, and you have 135 cars. There's no way to control that and to be able to get in and out of there.
All right. Thanks.
Okay, we did have one last person online that wanted to speak, V. Beeman.
All right, and we'll take this as the last input for the public meeting.
Please, yeah. This is Kay Beeman. I show up on the Qs, Virginia. We live at 2018 Limit, so we are in the mainstream of the traffic that comes through there, just as Heismans and Bakers and Connie Nielsen next to us. This, when we moved out here 20 years ago, I told my husband 50 years ago, I'm a city girl, and I said, "I would live in the country if I had a blacktop to my door." Well, it happened, and we're, we loved living here. Then they built a school. Our creek bed that runs across the back of our property becomes a roaring river, but that's, that's beside the point. They didn't do the proper drainage from the school. So we have a roaring river, which drains down through, Jerry spoke of it going back across his property every time we get a heavy rain. We had to build a berm across the back of our property to keep from flooding our basement. With that said, I'm not against progress, and I would hope that the group that is trying to develop this would come up with something satisfactory as far as structures go, drainage, the whole works. They're reputable, they're reputable people, as we all know. With that said, though, Limit has got to have something done to it. We, we know that we would lose some of the frontage off of our property, as well as the folks across the street, but we've got to have a wider street. Somebody's going to get killed sooner or later, or seriously injured. Just like everyone else, in the morning, we don't leave our house when school, when the traffic's coming down. At posted 30 miles an hour, not a chance. It should be posted 20. And then, if they go 30, it might be all right, but we have traffic consistently driving way too fast down Limit. If you meet somebody on the hill, you better be going very slow, because chances are they're coming over the top of the hill and not right in the middle of the street. With that said, my heart goes out to the folks that live over on Vila. My thought there is that the city would just add an extra lane, a center lane, that would, that could alleviate the issue of traffic flow. And then the school, we have family who lives in Florida, and when their boys were in elementary school, they went to a school that was heavily populated, and they had, I would say, looking at the map here of Henry Leavenworth, they had a zigzag driveway that probably was at least a half a mile of blacktop within the school's front yard, just for traffic, because they lived, the, the school was on a major highway. So they had to, they had to address the pickup, and they did it quite well. Shame on the school board for doing what they did and not having the foresight of what was going to happen when it came to picking up children from the school. We have a good relationship with the folks up at Henry Leavenworth, and kids are important to us, and, and our neighbors are important to us. We all enjoy living where we live, and I think if the city would just embrace the fact that we live in a really neat neighborhood, and, and take a little bit of our front yard, take both sides, and give us enough room to have enough lane going both directions to where there can be a division line down the center. It isn't, it's a one-way street. If they're not going to do that, it, our limit needs to be a one-way street. That's the way we feel about it. With that said, regarding the project, like I said, it's progress, if they do it right, and they take into consideration storm sewers, et cetera, I don't want water coming down into my backyard either, just like the rest of the neighbors. So they've got to do it right if they're going to do it. That's all, that's all I got, folks. Take care, stay safe.
All right, thank you very much. All right, I'd like to thank everybody that is here today and everybody who's also participating via the Zoom meeting. I appreciate it. It takes a lot to come out and talk to members of the city, planning boards, whether the city planners. Clearly, I, and I'm sure the rest of the commissioners have heard everything that you've said, but at this point, I'm going to go ahead and close the public meeting. I'm going to open it to any commissioners who may have questions for the staff or the
Staff, so I took, took note of number 11 in the email on option A, and if the development is built, there will likely, and I underlined the word likely, be an organized effort to have city-improved Limit west of 20th Street, and that is not in our plans at this point. So I'm reading that exactly how, nothing, okay. So likely doesn't give me any guarantee of anything in the future, okay. Thank you for that.
Commissioners at home, questions? And I can't see them. Chris James Sherry, anything? Lindo? Linda?
I don't have any at this time, Mr. Sherry Whitson.
Thank you.
It's pretty clear what the issues are.
Appreciate it. Chris?
Yeah, I agree. I think I've heard an awful lot, and I think we all, we all know what the issues are, so I have no more questions.
Thank you. James, Linda, opportunity?
I do wanna say, it's, it's nice and refreshing to see a community come together for a common cause. I live in a historical neighborhood myself, and I, this is beautiful to see, so kudos to y'all for coming together for a common cause.
All right, commissioners, we have three options for regarding this request. We can recommend approval of the rezoning request, we can recommend denial of the rezoning request, or we can table the initial, excuse me, table the issue for additional information or consideration. So, at this time, I'll accept a motion or further discussion.
I recommend denial of the rezoning request from R. 125 to R. M. 5 to the City Commission.
All right, any additional thoughts?
I'm sorry, we can't hear that. Can you speak up, please?
Yep. So, I recommend denial of the rezoning request from R. 1 to R. 25, and some of my, just some of my feedback here, the proposed rezoning could have potential detrimental effect on nearby property. We've heard that out loud here. A lot of information with no real, no real conceptualized vision on this, no sidewalk shown, no storm sewer system shown, no sanitary sewer system, no water quality feature shown, no identified utility easements. We heard safety up front and paramount, and then, again, I underline something, this has always been single-family agricultural in nature. I don't see any reason to change that.
All right, so that's a recommendation for denial. Commissioners? James?
I second it. James Diggs, I second the recommendation, board it out.
All right, so it's been made, motions have been made, a motion's been accepted, all in favor of denying this request?
Might have you go do a roll call vote, just since three are remote, just so we can get those, the votes recorded for the minutes correctly.
All right, so, we'll do it remote. So, we'll start with, I'm sorry, Chris, you're the first person on the screen. Chris, you vote for denial of the rezoning request?
Vote, yes, vote for denial.
James, you already seconded it, but may I add, yes?
Yes, a vote for denial.
Sherry?
A vote for denial.
Linda? Linda? Can you type?
I think we lost her.
Can you type, give her a quick chat, ask her to vote, please, and thank you.
There she is.
I know Linda has some hearing difficulties with these sometimes, and so it's hard to get her.
So, I'm assuming that's a no vote.
Maybe try her in the chat room, you want me to?
No, we're doing that. Sherry, we're chatting, we're chatting to her now. Sorry.
We have, we have three denials already, right?
We got four. One, two, three. Yep. Can we, should we call her?
I'm not sure if she's seen it. You, you can, you can finish the vote here, yeah.
All right, so for the, for those present, for commissioners present, voting in favor of the dial, made the motion, check.
Denial.
All right.
Did you vote?
Yeah, I'll vote for denial as well, I guess.
Okay, so, of the five that have voted, it's all supporting the motion for denial.
Right. Right, so the motion does not carry. Now, if I'm...
So, the recommendation is for denial, and so...
Before it goes to the city commission in two weeks.
Yes, so any rezoning request, regardless of the vote that the planning commission makes, unless that's to table the item for further discussion, so since you have put forth a recommendation for denial, then this would go to the city commission for them to further consider it.
Roger. And that's in two-week time, right? Essentially, two weeks' time?
It's, it has to be a 14-day period, because there, there's a state statute requirement to allow a period for a protest petition, and that's given 14 days by state statute. The city commission, I do know, has canceled their second regular meeting of December, because that falls Christmas week, so there will not be a second meeting in December. So, this will go to the city commission, the first meeting in January.
And so, do we get notice, or how does that work?
You will, you will be able to follow, you'll be able to check the agenda as it's posted on the website, but notice is not sent again.
What you need to do is just go to the website, double-check to see what the topics are for the city commission meeting. But as a rule of thumb, it'll be the first part.
Yeah, it'd be the...
Ma'am?
So, in theory, you also deny it, and you go forward, in front of another board, and in theory, could be approved at that point?
It goes to the city commission, they could vote in favor of it, yes.
So, the planning commission is just a, makes a recommendation on these items, which is what's legally allowed by state statute, and then the city commission makes the final decision. And so, that meeting would be on January 12th, that it would go before the city commission for a final vote. And Linda does not concur with the vote to deny, so it'd be a vote of five to one.
One, okay. Questions, sir?
Yes, will that be public?
Yeah, it'll be just like this.
Yeah, it'll be another public hearing.
Yeah, and it's, it looked exactly like this, there's a couple, some commissioners will be sitting here, the rest of them will be remote, you wear a mask, you sit there at social distance, and it's very similar.
Right.
You're welcome. All right, since there is no more official business for the planning commission, I call this meeting to adjournment. Thank you all for participating. I would say, you know, for commissioners, is there anything the commissioners have for the staff before we release them to go home?
Not at this time, thank you.
Have a great holiday, everyone.
Oh, yes, thank you, Chris.
Be safe.
Thank you. Sherry?
Okay, and just to let you all know, we do have two items on the January agenda, so we will have a meeting in January.
Will we stop recording?
Bye, everyone.